Is that right?
I don't know.
Let's see, really, they don't know.
How to keep it turned off.
Yeah.
And we, if it's done, we got it done.
No, we didn't.
From our corner ahead. I just want to say they're going to join us.
I just go back there and really ask them that.
That's all, why do you stay in the center?
That's crazy.
Oh, it was here. On that mercy of the car. Well, we, you do.
It'll be.
Be glad.
This is.
The size of the truck. I don't know about the size, but I don't know.
Yes, sir.
I told her to her aunt in Georgia.
Father, we thank you now. We bless you, Father, this special meeting right now. We ask you to lead us and guide us to thank you right now for what you're going to do. And Father, you know this day would come even before we, even before the foundation of the world. Thank you now for what you're going to do and how you're going to guide us. Help us. Help us, Father. Help us, Father. Help us. We do ask, and we bless your name now. We lean in dependent on you. These blessings and all other blessings we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's read it. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome everyone to this special meeting. It's Monday, August 28, 2023, 11:00 p.m. You have a conference line, seven hundred. Number is 917-900-1022. Access code is 32347-POUND. This is not a toll-free number. You may be subject to long distance charges according to your longer plan. When the chairperson opens the meeting, public comment, please pause the lowest track. If you reach your speed, please dial star five. The moderator will unmute your line unless your turn to speak can notify you by announcing the last four digits of your telephone number. Please announce your name and address, and you will be allowed to speak for three minutes. Any person wishing to address the board regarding an adjourned item will be given three minutes for comment. A commenter may only speak one time for each adjourned item. So, we'll go to number three. Approval of the agenda? Have they motioned to approve? Do we have a second? Second, all in favor? The board consider approval of letter of engagement from Taylor County at Ketchum Appraisal Group Incorporated for the yellow book appraisal for the possible acquisition of the 3.95 acre site down in Spring Warrior, adjourned by Melody Cox. Melody?
I can speak to this on Melody's behalf. I did hear back from Ketchum, and because they have standard terms and conditions, they said that they would not be able to make any changes on our behalf. And I discussed this with our county attorney, who felt that that was not acceptable. So, we just need direction from the board, since there's, you know, we're under a time constraint as far as the acqui... Yes, sir.
Well, they also said that they weren't gonna, that they weren't gonna do it for us.
That's what, yes, sir.
That they were not.
That's what I thought I said.
They didn't finish it.
Why is that?
Because we asked them to alter their agreement, and they're not gonna alter their agreement. And they just decided, like I told you all before, they really wanted the job. They would have agreed to those small changes that I requested, if y'all recall me saying that. And they said they were not gonna change. So, and the email that I, that I got from them, from Awanda, was that they said that they weren't gonna do the job, even if we acquiesced to their agreement. So.
I'm glad you said that.
It was fine. That's what I said.
Did they exhume out?
That's right. That's right.
Was that what we had? Is they're not gonna do the, they're not even talking to do the work now?
I guess I didn't take it that way. I think because they, we were asking them to change the terms and conditions, and that they were not able to change the terms and conditions upon advice from their legal department, that they would, I think they were just assuming that they would not get the job. But I understand there may be a different interpretation.
What is our timeline?
We have until the end of December to, with our willing seller. So, I just wanna, you know, we can, we can try to go to the second, to the second quote and see if that, if Gulf Consortium is in agreement with that. I just wanna keep y'all in the loop that we, if we don't move forward with this group, which I understand why, that it will take some additional time to either get new quotes or get another quote, or whatever we need to do.
I make a motion that we look to the second group, or whoever's in line, or somebody else, to do this.
I'll second that motion. There should be some other companies out there. We jump on them.
You've already got one. All you gotta do is just tell them.
We have a motion and a second on this item. All in favor? The board consider approval of grant application to the 2024-25 funding cycle of the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program, requesting funding assistance for Phase Two of the rehabilitation of South Sun Park, adjourned by our grant writer.
Hey, everybody. Can you hear me?
For sure. Yes, ma'am.
All right. We moved this back to get it out before the storm hits. The grants in the amount of $124,830. We have requested a waiver of match, which is included in the application. The costs were $98,280 for pickleball. Playground improvement was $3,850. A picnic facility was $1,500. Parking improvement was $12,000. Security housing, $3,000. Landstaking around the pickleball court, $4,000. And the nature study kiosk is $3,000. So, that total was 1.4%. Any questions?
Yes, bottom line, is there any calls to us?
No. We are requesting a waiver of match, and we have it included in the package for the chairman's signature. But we are requesting that waiver.
Motion to approve?
Second. A motion and a second to approve. All in favor? Thank you, Melody.
Thank you.
See, the board consider approval of grant application to the 2024-25 funding cycle of the Florida Recreation Development Assistance Program, requesting funding assistance for the rehabilitation and improvement to Taylor County Horseman's Arena, located at Forest Capital Hall, adjourned by our grant writer. Melody?
We are requesting a grant in the amount of $200,000. We, this is another case where we are requesting a waiver of match. So, there'll be no money from the county. But I do wanna touch on something after I finish. The arena would have a new rehabilitation, including the seating, shade covering, our new arena surface, and the six-foot, you know, gate to regulations, like arena of 150 by 250, is $107,000. The new playground would be $3,600. The picnic area would be $1,500. The RV surface, $8,000. Security lighting, $400. Roofing improvements, including steel exterior doors, is $6,000. And your parking improvements would be $3,000. With that said, to be in compliance with ADA standards down the road, our requirement from those, in fact, parking space, to have a sidewalk eventually going to the western. We did not have enough money in that budget. We tweaked it, tweaked it on the sidewalks. We have a cost of about $10,000 down the road. The county may actually put in those sidewalks. But there was just, like, in that budget, we just had any more than we did to accomplish what? I just went over with it. But again, at this point, we're requesting waiver of match, and we can, when they got the sidewalk still down the road. But we went to, D. D. Griner, who has some advice on the, on the parking and the size of the parking, and he did let us know that we may need those sidewalks to be in ADA compliance.
All right. Let's move. Question, we've got two more. I'll ask for a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second. Motion and a second to approve. All in favor? All right.
Thank you, everyone. And I do wanna let you know that we have these two grants ready to go. We will have those out before the storm, so that we are, you know, make the deadline on Thursday. But everything's ready to go. Jamie worked all day yesterday to make sure we have this ready. So, we will have it gone by tomorrow noon and send it to the state office. So, we're good to go. So, thank you.
Thank you, Melody. All right, moving on. I believe this is, I don't know if probably y'all hear for him, seven. The board consider declare a local state of emergency for tropical storm. I do. Now, we do have a resolution on this, too. We'll read the resolution first.
Motion to read the resolution by time of amendment.
Second. Motion and a second to read the resolution. All in favor?
I did it short form, but we're gonna do the long one. Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Taylor County, Florida, declaring a local state of emergency, delaying procedures and formalities during the period of such emergency. authorized to direct and the Taylor County Emergency Management Director, John Baut, to take whatever actions as may be necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the community pursuant to this declaration.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Motion to approve the resolution. We have a second.
Second.
All in favor? Any other discussion on this?
John, do you wanna give an update on what the update from the National Weather Service is doing?
Okay, as of the last call that we had, they are forecasting to be a category three whenever it makes landfall, or a category three or higher, if possible, because they always say it was strengthening, if possible. So, that's what we're planning on. The storm surge, the last indications, is predicted to be up to 11 feet. So, obviously, that's a potential for life-threatening storm surge. We have, we've put out all the notices. We've just issued the evacuation order for coastal areas and mobile homes, RVs, substandard housing countywide. There will not, due to it being a cat-free hurricane or higher, there is not an evacuation shelter for the county. All of those people are, we're requesting that they shelter outside of the county. Once the storm passes, we will have a host shelter at Forest Capital Hall for people that have damage to their homes.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. Are mandatory evacuation?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
When would you start that?
Right now. Right now. I also wanna point out, please, that that 11 feet is above ground level, not 11 feet above sea level. 11 feet above ground level.
So, if you're standing on the bank down there, it's gonna be a 11 feet.
So, it will be in line with what we got with the no-name storm.
When would they actually have to leave the premises?
Well, they're expecting landfall at 8 o'clock on Wednesday morning, so they need to.
They need to be out there. Can't they?
The water, from what we were advised, the water level will start rising Tuesday evening, and then progress as the storm approaches. So, they don't, they don't need to wait.
Is the shelter gonna be open prior to the storm?
No, ma'am. There will not be an evacuation shelter. There's going to be a host shelter after the storm.
Why is that?
Because we're issuing a countywide mandatory evacuation, so you don't open shelters. You don't want them here. You want them gone to another county.
You want those shelters outside of the affected areas.
What about, I can understand it's people at all, people, what about folks in the compromised area that don't have the money to go outside, reading it down to the start with, like that? That our responsibility to do that's vulnerable.
As far as the county or emergency management, statutorily, we are required to provide assistance to those people that are on the special needs registry.
We are doing that. We've made arrangements for it. We're calling the special needs patients if they want to leave. You know, even though we say mandatory, we can't make them, you know? Yeah.
So, they're being, everybody on the special needs registry, they're being contacted, and if they advise that they need transportation out, that they can't do it, then we're, we're working with Big Ben Transit, and we'll have them get done and transferred. At this time, since we don't have a special needs shelter, we usually shelter those folks at Leon County. We're still waiting on verification from Leon County. They're gonna open their shelters. We should be getting that soon. If not, we'll identify another place to take them.
In respect to reentry or rehabilitation zone, is there any kind of guidance?
The reentry stickers for those people that will need them. I've advised everybody that the only time you'll need a reentry sticker is if an area has been closed by law enforcement.
Do we expect that to be closed for a limited?
That's too early to tell right now, but it's a possibility. If there's a lot of damage in any particular area, then it will be closed for a short time while we're.
Can y'all talk about the wind? That's probably something everyone needs to.
Yeah. So, the wind speed is of critical importance here. That's why we're doing a countywide evacuation. They're saying that the probability is 50 to 60% that we will, well, I'm sorry. Back to wind speed. There is a 10 to 20% chance, and that's high, according to the National Weather Service, that you will have sustained winds, not gusts, sustained winds of 57 miles an hour or higher inland, and that we could have hurricane-sustained winds in the coastal area above 75 miles an hour. So, that's gonna produce significant damage, trees, power poles. It's, it's, it's a major storm, and that's why we're not taking it lightly. We're preparing as, you know, as early as we can, and that's why we're issuing the order. We actually have 10 troopers coming in at 2 o'clock to help us. We're gonna go to do a door-to-door notification on the coastline. And we're gonna start, we'll be in oscillate states all the way to St. Anthony's. So, I don't want, you know, we don't wanna take any chances that people aren't getting the message that this is gonna be a major storm.
This evening?
Starting at 2 o'clock this afternoon, we will start doing door-to-door.
Going back to the special needs. If they're, if they're not on this list, then they're out of luck? Or what happens if somebody calls and they're not on your list?
Well, if some, obviously, if somebody calls and they need assistance, we're gonna do our best to help them. It's not a, I might say it's not a cut-and-dry thing, but that's why most folks, and this is coordinated with the Department of Health, and we have 35 people at last count, if I remember correctly. There are about people on the special needs registry.
Along with, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am.
At your last meeting at 9:30, is it predicted that we're gonna get a direct hit? Or exactly what are they saying right now?
What, so the current, the predicted path, the center of the cone is just barely south of us into Dixie County. However, and it's what the National Weather Service, they advise, this is going to be a very big storm and a very strong storm. So, that, that actually means almost nothing to us, other than the fact that we're, we're gonna get a lot of heavy winds. We're gonna get rain and obviously storm surge. Now, currently, we're barely to the left of that centerline track. Obviously, the, to the right of that centerline track is always the worst. But however, due to the size of this storm, it's really irrelevant.
And they also mentioned that there's a possibility of a westward shift this morning. So, if it shifts back, we could be in the direct.
Yeah, there's still plenty, there's still plenty of time for it to shift one way or the other.
What are the other speeds?
2:30.
That's one of the 2:30, and then 5:15. The meeting, first thing in the morning, is the National Weather Service. The one at 11:15 is with FDPM. 2:30 is the National Weather Service, and then 5:15 is another one with FDPM. Some people ask why are there two different entities having those meetings? FDPM focuses on the state of Florida, the whole state. Obviously, they're the ones that help coordinate the resources for us and stuff like that. The National Weather Service in Tallahassee, that holds our webinar there, Kelly Gossi, he focuses on our area. He gives us the more specific information about our county.
I need to point out one more thing about wind, and we've talked with Dan, the city. We're all on board. Emergency services ceases to respond at 45 mile an hour sustained winds. We don't send anybody out. That's why it's important for these people to know that if they choose to stay there and it gets rough, they're gonna have to ride it out until afterwards. If once those winds are at 45, there's, it's not safe to put our people on the road.
I would add, in the coastal areas, we will be pulling emergency services out of those areas just for the safety of our people and for our equipment. And if St. Anthony's gets landlocked in there, we can't get back to our equipment. It does us no good. So, we will be monitoring that. And when we have that shutdown time period, we will be pulling all emergency services, equipment, ambulance, fire, law enforcement, everything will be pulled out of those areas.
We're, we will have some high-water vehicles staged at the EOC. Normally, if we weren't expecting such a high storm surge, we would probably stage these vehicles a little closer to the area. But it doesn't do us any good if we stage them down there, and then we can't get back to them because of the water. So, we'll, we'll have them staged for response. They're ready to go. We've checked them. Everything's ready, so.
And that includes public works?
Yes.
I mean, so if someone waits until the winds are above 45 miles per hour and there's a tree down, we're not sending, we're not planning to send out public works to move the tree out of the road. So, people really need to, to start their evacuation as soon as possible and not wait until nobody can get to them.
In respect to the utilities, Tri-County gonna maintain power on the coast.
Tri-County is not gonna pull their meters. They're not going to.
They would lose power still, though.
I just wanna be clear. I mean, I've heard different directions, so I thank you.
I verified that within this one.
Do they, or have they started trying to line up as far as response?
Because they have, the governor was on the call earlier, and they have staged power companies that are ready for immediate response once the storm has passed through, so. There's a bunch of trucks in town. You can see them already.
Well, did they say why they weren't gonna pull the meters? Did they comment on that?
Nothing.
I heard they just didn't have time, but I did not hear that directly from them.
I heard last time they pulled them, a lot of places, like, one of them. The huge storm just popped up and then.
Yes.
Last minute.
So, it's probably not giving them a lot of time to do something, so many meters. So, they just probably got out of it for the best.
I did hear you mention the city, that the city was involved. How, how, what's this level of water in the city? Anything?
I mean, it shouldn't have any water in the city, other than the rain.
Shouldn't be no problem, other than the rain?
Other than the rain.
Just wind, right?
Yes, rain, yeah.
Y'all recall how many inches of rain inland?
Seven. Five to seven, five to, five to six inches, four to six, something like that, seven inches.
So, it doesn't seem to be a big rainmaker at this time, because it's moving so quickly.
Yeah.
There's gonna be areas that's gonna have issues, but.
Again, we wanna caution, they're, they're not ruling out that it could be a category four at landfall.
So. Should that be set, do we, is it, are we gonna get it open? As a permission, if we might need to come back and make other arrangements?
We have everything here. We have the LSC in place. We have our, like I say, the evacuation orders have been made. All the other resources and stuff will just be missions placed in the web EOC, the FDPM.
So, this resolution is really giving, you know, John, the authority to make decisions that need to be made on behalf of the county as far as emergencies. And we'll talk about operations just a little bit later, because I do need your input on that.
Any more questions from the staff?
Ma'am, is this a big storm? Well, I'm asking you this. Those folks out there, East Ellison, what kind of problem you got? What kind of problem is it?
It depends on how much rain we receive. So, we will, we'll have to see. I know that, Hank, when is the last time you were out on East Ellison? I went out last.
Thursday, I think.
Right.
It was down quite a bit out there. Maybe on the south side of Ellison, she could get to her home. There was, I know, water across her drive at home, so.
Mr. Top, did you mention the no-name storm? So, you're talking the storm of '93?
It's, you know, maybe in that same style of storms.
No, this is, no, this is a hurricane, but the storm surge could be pretty much equal to what we got there. It's gonna pull a lot of water out of it.
What is the main recommendation for evacuation route? Which, which, should you just travel north? You don't wanna travel west, because it may switch. And you don't wanna travel east, because it may switch.
The chances of it having a hard western turn, there's a front that's steering this. So, all, every model so far has shown that it's gonna come up, and then it's gonna start curving to the east. So, there's nothing that it's gonna be pulling into Alabama or anything.
Yeah, so we would say up into, not Valdosta by any means, because they're kind of in another area, but Thomasville over looked like it was pretty safe up in Georgia. So, northern, you know, northwestern maybe.
If you wanna be in the western side.
How about, what's the prediction for Bay County and?
I mean, not, not hardly, I mean.
Not a problem.
They're not, they're not in the.
They don't even have any watches or anything and stuff.
Right.
They were hit so bad. Oh, my God. Okay, thank you.
If there's a comment, this item will move to number eight. The board consider approval of primary debris monitoring agreement with WIT, O'Brien, and secondary debris monitoring agreement with Thompson Consulting Services. John Lauk. Any questions?
Debris monitoring, I'd like to ask a question, but what is their actual?
Okay, so the debris monitoring folks, they actually come in when the debris management companies come in, and they're, they're loading the debris into the trucks. What the monitoring people do, they monitor that debris transport. And then at the end of it, they pretty much, they're a verification process of the tonnage that is removed for whatever areas and removed. That way, whenever it is time for the reimbursement, the proper dollar amounts are documented.
I've had local contractors, businesses have asked about, how do they go about bidding on the arm of the gun? Got the equipment insured and such, license insured?
Well, whenever. Well, uh, whenever, let's say, for instance, with this storm, uh, Lord forbid, we have to activate those contracts, uh, they're gonna be the, the primary source of that debris management. And what I, I guess I could recommend to any business is that whenever, just like with these contracts that we have here, whenever we send out the request for proposals, that they submit one, just as these other companies have.
But this monitoring company is the one they need to send it to?
No, sir, that would, it's, well, in the next five years, we're gonna have to go through this process again.
John, I think what they're asking, if I could interrupt, they're asking about subcontracting for debris management. So the monitoring is not actually performing the work. The monitoring is certifying that the debris that was actually handled by the debris, debris management company, they certify that, so we can obtain reimbursement, and that is, we have to do that.
Yes, that's required for reimbursement.
No matter who holds the fault, they have to monitor all of it.
Yes.
And wait, get the weight on it and everything.
They have to verify all that, yes.
In other words, they won't have anything to do with the contractors themselves besides just monitoring what they.
Uh, and I'll say that if, if somebody is wanting to assist with the debris management, they would have to contact, uh, one of the two companies, or at least the primary company that we have the contract with now, and that would be between them.
That was a question, I think, is probably what I was getting at this time.
Right.
To the man, so that's a trouble our necks out, if you're already.
Whoever it is, we might wanna just remind them that when it's time for R and P, that they submit, submit theirs then.
Well, I think in this part, they would probably have to work with, it's on our necks.
If it's a small business, then that's probably, that's probably the avenue they would have to go over, because these companies that we have these contracts with, they're, they're huge companies that have a.
I couldn't even tell you how many resources they have.
I'm probably going to buy unmade knowledge.
You say you got a contract with them, in other words, they, they're definitely the ones that are gonna get, get the job?
Yes, sir, that, that's.
And they're gonna subcontract the local people where they can work out on the job or how, let's get this straight, for the. I want the local people that need the job to get the first chance to work at it, well.
That, that is between that person and that company. I can't, I can't speculate as to how anyone to manage their, their business.
But that's not the monitor, but for the removal, I think.
Yeah, for removal.
Which is really fine, I think.
They always do.
Yeah.
They always.
They can, they have the opportunity.
Always get them to have an agreement with this primary contractor.
Okay.
They need to contact those folks and then make those agreements accordingly.
Yeah.
All right. There's no other discussion at all?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve, you have a second? Second, all in favor? We're going to warn the board to consider approval of primary debris management agreement with Ceres and secondary debris management agreement with Crowder, brought up again by John Lauk.
So, I think we probably just did a detail.
Take Crowder out of Tallahassee?
Uh, not sure, they are, I can't remember what.
Houston, Texas?
It might be out of Texas, I don't remember. They're, they're huge companies.
How, how did you come up with them?
Uh, we requested a request for proposals, they submitted, um, their, their proposals, we scored each one of them out, um, and then.
Wasn't that part of the monstrous package of folks that had been?
Oh, yeah, that big carpet coming here, that was all that.
Yeah. Work, have some fun time, leave it in.
Yeah, at the last meeting, they made recommendations to you that you accept it on who to hire and this, and this, you were just entering into those agreements with them, those companies they recommended.
I think it was said that if it was a higher number of applicants, this go around and you.
Yeah, there was.
There was a fourteen between management and monitoring.
We have a motion to approve this agreement. Do we have a second?
We give, we recommend on that.
Go ahead.
They gonna do all the debris cleanup, that company?
Yes.
In other words, local people that does debris cleanup won't even have a chance to, you know?
Well, that's between them and, and the primary contract.
In other words, they give Crowder, and they'll work under them at what you're saying. They're gonna get in a trade where they could be able to get on.
They need to miss communication here. It is up to Crowder whether they allow them to or not. We can't guarantee that they'll get to work for Crowder.
Right.
But we have the same, we have the same contracts in place, though, I mean, we've had these contracts in place for as long as I can remember.
Last twenty years, please.
And we used local contractors before, you know, to clean up.
Right.
But I wonder how that, they just worked with Crowder and got the job, or I'm not, I'm not.
I, I, I'm just repeating what I think happened, because I was not here during that time. I know there was a canal cleanup.
There was.
That may have been contracted directly, but I don't know how that happened. It may be that we did not have provisions within the contract for canal cleanup, but there are, we did get, there are provisions within this contract for canal cleanup, I believe. We specifically.
We made special, or specific effort to make sure that canal cleanup's already addressed in the new contract.
What I'm getting at, I'm gonna make sure the local people have a shot at it if they can, you know, to do the job.
That would be for them to reach out to Crowder.
Right, right. Well, that's what I'm trying to get to, they work for Crowder, they, they subcontract under them, or whatever.
And Dan just brought up a good point, that I, you know, just assumed, this is for county property, this is not for individual home cleanup. So this is for right of way, canals, roads, you know, county ownership.
So contractors could work with the property owners. Without that war three.
Just, just so you know, the primary contractor which gets a Ceres, C E R E S, is out of Sarasota, and the secondary Crowder is listed here out of Mobile, Alabama.
The series will be the primary, secondary is gonna be Crowder. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve this agreement, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Ten. The board to consider approval of participation in the Florida recovery obligation calculation to streamline the public assistance process through the Florida Division of Emergency Management.
Uh, sure. Okay, so FROC is a new initiative by, um, the Florida Department of Emergency Management Director Kevin Guthrie, in an effort to streamline the reimbursement process after incidents just like we're facing here now. Typically, um, if, if you've been a part of those kind of processes in the past, after an event, um, you have to submit all your documentation for reimbursement. Obviously, the county has to put all that money up front to pay whatever has to be paid for, and then all that documentation is submitted to FDEM, and then to FEMA. Well, obviously, it takes quite a bit of time for them to go through all that and to sub, for the county to get reimbursed for all that money. What FROC does, just like what some of us have done, we've participated in a training course for FROC, and what that is, when you opt into that program, that tells FDEM that whenever you submit your documentation for reimbursement, that the chances are very, very high that that documentation is submitted properly, um, versus someone that doesn't. And then depending on what your score is, whenever you opt in, depends on the percentage of the reimbursement that you can get immediately following the event. So for example, whenever we opt in and just say they score us at forty percent, we will be reimbursed at forty percent of the amount that we seek reimbursement for.
Immediately, immediately. You don't lose the other sixties, but you get that money immediately, and then the other sixty percent you get after they've done all the verification process, right?
What's the cost for us to participate in this?
How many folks were part of the training to be? I think we had eight, ten, ten of us that were in the training.
John, when does that, when does this actually start? Is it there, is there a waiting period? So it won't be effective immediately? Will it be next hurricane season?
Yes.
Okay. So what helps with this storm?
There are, um, well, don't, I hate to say don't quote me on this, but I know there, there are, since we have opted in now, that there are, um, there are benefits to us opting in now.
Okay.
Um, obviously, the, the full benefit will be next hurricane season, but there are benefits to us voting now.
And then it also helps with avoiding de-obligation.
Oh, yeah, and that's the, the biggest thing to that, is, um, to ensure against de-obligation. Say we spent all the money, they reimburse us, um, but then all of a sudden, they review the documentation and find out that it's, uh, um, it's not reimbursement. And then all of a sudden, we have to pay money back.
And we have had to defend ourselves against that in the past. It's, and it could be years later before we get notification that they've de-obligated a certain amount for a certain reason.
Motion to approve.
Hey, motion to approve, you have a second?
Aye.
Second, all in favor? The board to discuss workshop and special meeting schedule for August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three.
I really just, um, want consensus from the board that we do not wish to have any workshop tomorrow night. We've moved everything from the special meeting to today, uh, but I, I just wanted your permission to reschedule, um, that workshop, maybe in a couple of weeks.
I sure folks, is that a period that they would need to do?
Yes, sir.
So, we need a motion to reschedule?
I don't think so, I just wanted to discuss it with y'all.
All right, board to discuss county operations.
I, I would like some feedback from the board, um, regarding closing county offices. I know that this is something that can be very difficult to plan for, and that if we close offices and we cease operations and then, you know, the storm is delayed, or we don't have the impacts that we were concerned with, that, you know, there can be some disgruntled citizens. But I would like some feedback as far as when we should plan to, um, close county offices, um, keeping in mind that evacuations are starting today for folks at the coastline and in mobile homes, which could certainly be some of our employees, um, and try to, try to discuss what, what y'all have in mind. I know that surrounding county is closing Tuesday and Wednesday, okay, the schools, the schools are closing Tuesday and Wednesday all day.
I would recommend that we do the same thing, that we close Tuesday and Wednesday, and then that we have, that we're open Thursday and Friday for all employees. And I say that on Friday, I know that some departments are off on Friday, but perhaps during this, uh, extreme circumstances, that we should have a man at, because we don't know what kind of, what we're gonna be facing, that we may need help from all employees.
Now, Hank, yep, for the hand.
Go, go.
Okay. So I know Hank is going to have some of his people work regardless, um, so we may have to take that on a department by department. In other words, if public works, works through the storm, maybe, maybe we don't expect them to work on Friday, but.
No, he's gotta be available.
Sure, I mean, prepare.
I don't think we need to take a dump site tomorrow, myself, if they gonna have, I mean, if you get to your family, it'll be a mess to go to that storm gust zone and we get on them later on in the week.
I understand that, my only concern is that people have to prepare.
Yes.
Um.
Well, I mean, there's enough dump sites that one person called in and had to do something like that, they, they could go to another dump site, I mean, it would be, I'd just hate to see it filed at the gates like that before, when they close too, too early.
Those sites to close Wednesday?
I would, I would rather see the site be closed Wednesday. If.
Didn't screw up half a day tomorrow?
No, they're, they're closed all day. How would y'all feel about maybe closing at noon tomorrow, closing the sites at noon tomorrow? Because this storm is supposed to come in Tuesday night, right?
We've seen flood situation in the times.
We close the offices Tuesday and Wednesday, and we, we obviously, there's a mandatory evacuation, so to speak, Thursday, if folks leave town, I mean, you're gonna, folks are not, they're gonna be, they're not coming back probably Wednesday night, so.
Well, I would recommend that we, um.
I, I would, I would, I would lean, you know, more to closing, maybe if we're gonna do it half a day tomorrow, and then it may be half a day Thursday.
So maybe close at noon tomorrow and reopen at noon on Thursday?
I do find.
I think that's probably be more realistic.
How does that work with the, of the judges here? How would that work with the court system?
Jack?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I don't, so they were talking about noon tomorrow, it's noon Thursday, so I don't, I mean, this is actually, you know, filings is all we have to worry about. I think as far as court goes, I think all that's already been taken care of.
We, we got lucky, because I was supposed to be all week in jury trials, and we had one today, a no-show by the defendant, so we're good to go and be flexible and we're able to, to, uh, with anything that comes on, so. Close courthouse, well, it's easy for us to do that.
It's hard that tomorrow, anybody wouldn't be thinking about going to the home. You're either gonna be planning to secure your property or leave town, but I'm not gonna be wrong, I'm not, I'm not against what you're proposing, uh, but that's just my, my input. And then Thursday, as many people as we can have back, because, you know, we're gonna, if it happens the way it's predicted, we're gonna need everybody on board.
I, I would just say that this is a big storm, and you've got employees that live along the coastline, you've got employees that live elsewhere, they're gonna need quite a bit of time to get their stuff evacuated and get their families out. That's why we would, I would, I would recommend that you close Tuesday and Wednesday all day.
Yes.
I, I mean, that, to make it fair for your employees that do need to get out, um.
I would add too, the longer we leave it open, it just encourages citizens to stay a little bit longer. Uh, we really want to put an emphasis on evacuations need to happen. This is not her mean, this is worse than that. This is worse than anything that we've, we've seen as long as I've been here. Um, we really need to put as much emphasis on that, please leave, begging them to please leave, especially the coastal areas.
I mean, we're taking it serious enough that we've asked for extra help to come in to help us make those announcements to please, please get out.
It's counterproductive to, um, ask everybody to evacuate, but, and then ask staff to work a half a day Tuesday. I just don't feel like that that's the way we need to go.
Well, they wanna leave it to Tuesday and Wednesday, and then open back up Thursday morning?
Yes.
I mean, you might, you might consider that you may have to close again Thursday. If, if you've got major impact, if you've got a lot of employees impacted, you may have to extend it a day or so.
Like that, my ear, but somebody's gonna have to.
Right, we'll be able to, we'll be able to have some sort of damage assessment for you, you know, because it's early morning landfall on Wednesday morning, so we should have something pretty early in the day.
So, so let me make sure I've got this straight, we are closing Tuesday and Wednesday, but we're asking our, our folks who normally have Friday off to come in and work Friday?
Yes.
I don't know why you could, if you give them Tuesday off, uh, I would. I, I think that the employees that works for the county, city councils and everybody else, you're public, you're really served, and you won't, if you don't need them, that's one thing, but if you need them and they're not here, you got another problem.
Good. We'll be here. Motion to adjourn for this?
Yeah. Tuesday and Wednesday, not Thursday?
Friday.
Thursday and Friday, yeah.
I'll, I'll make that motion.
I second.
Yeah, a motion and a second for county operations, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We, uh, I don't know if I can see it, uh, you have a motion to adjourn? All in favor?
I'm muted.
I'll be there in a minute. I'll be there in twenty minutes.